Do we have any ready?
Yes.
I would like to call a meeting on Monday, February 1st, 2021 to order. Then do we have any, um, those who wish to speak? I don't know if we have a few. Very good. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask Barry Omen to lead us in the indication, if you would please.
Mr. President. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings of life. Thank you for this community and what it means to all of us. We pray especially for those that are suffering tonight in this pandemic, that you give those of their victims of it, that they'll have peace and give them rest and comfort. And we pray for those that are serving our country here in the brawl, that you do the same for them, just touch their families, meet their needs. And we thank you for those that are gathered tonight. Thank you for each commissioner, what they bring to the table. We pray that everything is done, for the betterment of this county, and we're pleased with your site. Christ's name, the Lord.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask Jonathan, if he would bring his children up to lead us in the pledge allegiance tonight. I think that'd be a great honor to his family. Here we go.
Allegiance to the pride of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
They can only come and sing Christmas carols to us. All right. Good job, how you doing? I'll stand up for one second. I'm going to take a picture of y'all. I think you guys are like the big.
I'm waiting that curtain a little bit.
Yeah. We did appreciate it. Thank you. You ready?
I know.
Okay. All right. They're going to be there in just a second again anyway, so.
That's right.
There you go. Thank you very much. All righty. At this time, we, um, we received a letter from the Republican Party recommending Jonathan Meads to fill the unexpired term of the late Frankie Madsen, who was southern outside C. And so at this time, we would need a motion to accept the nomination from the Republican Party, Jonathan Meads, to serve the southern outside, unexpired term.
Mr. Chairman, let me make the motion.
Sean makes the motion. There's a lot of seconds. All of those in favor, say the "a". If you're "a", you can press like a "s". So Jonathan, if you would come forward and bring your family with you. Now, are there other members of the Meads family here this evening that would like to stand and be recognized or stand for this program? He's ready. All right. Thank you all.
Ms. Allen, sorry.
Bring me up, Alice. I just don't want to. The land is going to administer the oath of office.
All right, Jonathan, if you raise your right hand and place your left hand on the Bible, I state your name.
Jonathan Meads.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God. I state your name, do solemnly swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the office of county commissioner, performed to the law, and to the best of my skill and ability, so help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you, Jonathan. Jonathan, here. Sir Jonathan, your seat will be reserved between Barry and Sean.
Which is kind of scary.
One thing to say, that I'm here for, for, in our court, for allowing us to participate in this swearing-in. Your devil really repaying an asset to the word. Your family members are here to show the support of you, to what you can do for the county, your support. So we're going to move along as we can with our agenda. And we really want to thank y'all for being here this evening. Amendments to the agenda, any from this afternoon, so far to your men?
None from this afternoon, Mr. Chairman. But we would like to amend the agenda to add a major here in Walloyo, updating the order of the air force vaccination traffic.
Okay, and we will amend that and put that under whole business, since it's a continuation of that. And that, yes, sir, Mr. Attorney.
Want to address the law, any contract? We will bring this to the next meeting.
We bring that to the next meeting. All right. So the amendment would be under eight, we've had eight A, which would be under the vaccinations in COVID-19, and Aaron Walloyo's presentation will comment on the traffic flow and the location of the vaccinations, vaccine center for vaccine education, starting tomorrow, is that right, Aaron?
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay. So we'll put that in, so we need an amendment to accept that to the general.
Second.
Charles makes the motion. Sean seconded. Any further discussion, all of those in favor, say the "a". If you're "a", you can press like a "s". At this time, we have, Linwood, you're on the agenda for your subdivision, so we'll call you when that comes up. And then we have Wendy Haislet, is that right, speaking correctly? Wendy, if you feel at work, like the Confederate monument, the statue, and coming to Holstead on Battle Field, or historical Battle Field, if you would come forward here. It is Haislet, right?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Keep them ass-horned.
Speaking there, if you would like to put it lower down.
Okay, I'm Wendy Haislet, and I was born and raised in the South. And I'm a descendant of the Confederate soldiers. And it's relevant that I speak here tonight in North Carolina. It's not about a statue that represents white supremacy or slavery, as they say. The statue that I'm here to speak about tonight is a war memorial. It's our Confederate soldier statue that represents love and honor and respect for our family, for our war veterans' bravery and sacrifice, where they answered the call of duty when Dixie was under attack in the War of 1861 to 1865. On this statue, you have the year 1861. You have a Confederate battle flag. You have the year 1865. You have a Confederate soldier who wears a knife hanging from his belt on the left side and stands at rest with a rifle on his right. His uniform is completed with a hat, a canteen, and a bedroll. The words "Our Heroes" to our Confederate dead. And you all know that it was erected by United Daughters of the Confederacy. I would like to ask y'all to follow the example of Ogdenmore County in Virginia. They took down our Confederate soldier statue, and the trucks delivered our statue immediately to Shenandoah Valley battlefields. They follow a monument policy. Our historical battlefields, they're the best place for all of our Confederate soldier statues to go, so they can be protected and preserved for our children, our next generations. The battlefields and historic sites throughout the Shenandoah Valley Battlefields National Historic District are places of remembrance and commemoration that memorialize and tell the story of soldiers and civilians, Union and Confederate, enslaved and free Americans, who lived through the years of the American Civil War and the Reconstruction, and the decades of Reconstruction and civil rights struggles that followed. Monuments are, and always have been, an important part of that commemoration, and an important part of interpreting history and understanding the past. The Shenandoah Valley Battlefield Foundation is opposed to the wholesale eradication or removal of plaques, statues, monuments, place names, and other public honors associated with the history and heritage of the United States. If the ending unfortunate event in a monument to Union or Confederate soldiers, Civil War officers, or commanders, civilians of the period, both enslaved or free, are removed from the original location, and if said monument is considered relevant to the story of the struggle from the Civil War to the civil rights in the Shenandoah Valley, the Shenandoah Valley Battlefield Foundation is open to assisting with the appropriate relocation of such monuments to the National Historic District. So I ask y'all tonight, take this Confederate soldier statue down and contact Kevin Walker, CEO of Shenandoah Valley Battlefield, and let him know that when you take it down, the trucks are going to deliver it straight to the battlefield. That's why I came there. I came from Virginia.
Thank you for doing that.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Under our whole business, Aaron, if you'd like to come forward. As far as you have a statement from Health Department also, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I've just got a short statement from the Health Department, and this is from Ashley Stute, who is the Director of Policy Planning and Preparedness. Vaccines that have been allocated for the ARHS region are designated for North Carolina residents. While we cannot review service, we will only serve residents of Virginia after all the North Carolina residents have been served, and only if vaccines available at that time that all others, after all others have been served. The system is designed to serve residents in their home state. People from Virginia will potentially be wasting a great deal of time driving here for no reasons when they could get their shot in Virginia. So they just wanted to put that message out. And also, there are indications that the amount of vaccine is, that we're going to be getting in the region is going to be a lot less over the next month. So given that, they're just going to be very restrictive on making sure that, you know, if there's any vaccine left over at clinic and somebody from Virginia is there, they would administer it, but it would only be after all the North Carolina residents were taken care of.
And Aaron's going to report about how quick this has been going and how stressful it has just been, traffic flow, and protection. So, if you can talk a little bit more. Paul, do you have a copy of the other proposal?
So, just to make it short, everybody knows the COVID clinics have been a COA for Pasquetan County High School. But if you've gone through that area during the COVID clinic, you know, it's a nightmare. You can't get anywhere. You can't get to the hospital. But we've had ambulances, bringing patients in, one that was coding from Curritah, they couldn't even get to the hospital because of traffic. So our issues have been finding a better, more suitable location that we can have a permanent site, you know, to be able to host these clinics. That's in the old airport runway, across from, across from the airport by the Coast Guard Base off Consolidated Road Camber. The plan I passed out, to share with all the commissioners and newspaper, is going to have an entrance into the old runway, which should be right by the DRS parking lot. But when you pull in, we'll have, first we'll have a deputy by the crosswalk for DRS employees, to make sure they get across the road safely and get to work safely. When they turn on, to make the right onto the entrance, they'll pass the DRS parking lot, that's where our setup begins. We'll have three staging lanes that will run you all the way up to where you make a left-hand turn to get to the, I guess, the tip of the runway, we'll call it. From there, you'll do the forms. There'll be National Guard people and people from our health services there. They'll actually go through the forms of everybody you need to complete to get your COVID vaccination. After you make and actually get on the runway, you'll split back out into four lanes of traffic, which will run down just about almost a half mile. You actually get your COVID shots in the four lanes, pull forward to observation period. Then when you exit, we'll have another patrol vehicle there making all traffic exit to the right. We do have it clearly marked, we'll have message boards out there tomorrow as well. So when traffic goes out, they can make a left on, excuse me, right on facial, and make another right on folly road, and then get the Wixler Road and exit. And we're hoping now to alleviate all the issues and not cause any too much congestion for the customer.
And Aaron, what are the times of operation for tomorrow, and when, you know, there's an issue with the base, people, and we heard that the Airport Authority, would you explain a little bit about the traffic?
Yes, sir. So we have, the back gate is open for deliveries, and they have people coming in at six and seven, the DRS employees, I think they have almost 500 workers that come in. They got to be there in the morning as well. So the morning's pretty congested. The message we put out, we've asked our health services to put out, we're going to put on the Office Facebook page, is where people not even arrive to the clinic until eight or 8:30. Just stay away from the area, there's no point in getting there early, because you're just going to wait. If you actually get into the clinic and you get in the staging lanes at 6 o'clock in the morning for your shot, there are no restrooms, and once traffic gets in behind you, you know, you're committed, you're there. So it's really better to wait to show up at 8:00, 8:30 to get your vaccination. That should, you know, pretty much gets you to the line quickly and back out without having to wait. We cannot have traffic back up on Consolidated Road, or be at a standstill on Consolidated Road. We also can't block the DRS parking lot. But we've been, I guess, warned pretty heavily about that from Coast Guard and Airport Authorities.
Okay. So around the room. Phil Sterck, any questions of Aaron? Phil, any questions of Aaron? Okay. Sean? Jonathan? Sean? Or Barry? Say something to you.
I only have one, no question, but I just want to make one statement. Yesterday, I spoke with Mr. Baptist, who's the Director of Health Department, and also, we are one of the leading areas as far as being able to administer the vaccine. And the reason why I talked with them, because I was at the College of Alma last time, I thought it was an excellent idea. But in this community, we have a lot of bicycles. I didn't see any bicycles in the line. So what we're looking at is a way to fascinate the people that are riding bikes in other kind of areas. I just want to make that report.
Okay, thank you. Mr. George, Paul. So the report today is that 6,500 people in Pasquetan County have been vaccinated, one of us in the region, and other counties that are proportionally trending as high. Last week, I think they ran out of about 15 minutes before their, they're allotted time.
Yes, sir.
They're designated, so hopefully they have enough vaccine to go to the community and all of that. Before you apply any other questions about that. Thank you, Aaron, for coming on short notice.
Yes, sir. Got to be.
Our attorney just sent me a letter, or note, not for you, but the Department of Public Work.
That scared me. We said it.
Jennifer, just seems like you're on the fat side. Let me plug you in and introduce yourself, London Clerk.
I'm Jennifer Tuck, and I was appointed today Clerk of Superior Court for Pasquetan County. Been with the clerk's office for six years. Prior to that, I worked in human resources, as a human resources manager for 10 years. And I have MBA degrees at Carlin University, and I look forward to continuing Ms. Partwright's legacy in serving the residents of Pasquetan County.
Very good. Thank you for that. This time, we have consent agenda for us, no amendments to that right. One second. We'll need to recuse Mr. Perry, because he is only actual number one for solid waste B for solid waste B, so we can recuse him for that, take action on all, all those except for that one, and the backup would be.
You're on there as well.
I know, it was me, I got to be recused, sorry. You know, I didn't turn this over to Charles.
Commissioner Perry is not.
This was earlier. I need to be recused.
Motion, to make a motion to recuse Lord E. Griffin Jr. from the vote of the consent agenda.
Move in second. Any questions? All those in favor, that'd be known by "a". All opposed, "a". Now we have, can have a motion to approve. First, we approve consent agenda. Second?
I'll second.
Remove, approve, second. So we approve the consent agenda. Any questions? All those in favor, that'd be known by "a". All opposed, "a". All right, Sarah. Sorry about going ahead and giving you next. So at this time, we'll need to call our planning director. Come forward and talk us a little bit about Oak Ridge, Phase Two, Section B, final plat, and a petition to add roads to Oak Ridge subdivision to the state maintenance system. Linwood, you want to speak on this also, or you won't? Okay, I figured you'd do it, Shelley. Okay, very good. Thank you. Joe?
Okay, tonight we have the board view, Oak Ridge, Phase Two, Section B. It is a final plat for 12 residential lots that are located off of Milfond Road, approximately 500 feet east of the intersection of Milfond Road and Sandy Road in Ruben Tensha. Linwood Williams is the builder and applicant for this project. Previously got approved Section A, and this is Section B, as I said, 12 residential lots, some possibly 20 acres. The properties owned are 25A residential, and lot sizes will range from 43,017 square feet to 66,770 square feet. And there, once this phase is approved, there will be a third section that has been approved with a preliminary plat that'll be Phase C, and that has 17 residential lots, and then Mr. Williams will be completed with this development. Under the current school districting, students generated from this development would attend Northside Elementary, Elizabeth City Middle School, and Passant County High School. This development is under the Newland Volunteer Fire Department's jurisdiction. When the subdivision was originally developed or approved, we did grant a variance from the subdivision ordinance fire hydrant requirements, because of the inability of South Hills Water Association to provide water pressure, excuse me, for this area. So right now, fire protection is accommodated through the use of McNewland Volunteer Fire Department's tanker trucks. However, with the Passant County Water System taking over the Newland System in the near future, hopefully, they have already installed fire hydrants in this section, and so it should be able to very easily become, the fire hydrant will actually be able to be used for fire protection, as well as flushing drinking water as well. So onsite systems are proposed to be utilized at this location, and they have received approval from Almond Health Services for the proposed lots, and they were part of groundwater and lowering device along the 3-inch or 3 feet sand at the backfield trenches. The area proposed for this approval is not located within the 130 flood zone and no wetlands were delineated with this location. The preliminary plat was approved by the Board Commissioners in July of 2017, and since then, Phase A did go to record. They have provided air connectivity, so there is the main entrance onto Milfond Road. However, there's also a connection within the first phase of Oak Ridge, which gives a little bit more leeway as far as entrance and exit into the town of the subdivision. Mr. Williams has provided a recreation fee, now $6,000, for this phase and compliance with the subdivision ordinance. The streets have already been paved, so no bond was required for that. Since this plat does meet all the requirements and complies with the subdivision ordinance, we are recommending approval on the plat of course.
Okay, no provisions or no conditions.
No.
All right, any questions of Shelley for Oak Ridge, Phase Two, Section B, that's up for us tonight. Wanting a motion to accept the reclamation staff, who's in this room?
Make a motion.
Jonathan makes the motion, second. Charles, if you're in this discussion, if you're in favor, signify, say "a". All those opposed, like a "s". All right, road system, Shelley, is the road system, was that in the same conversation too?
That's actually, sorry, not something that I've been involved with, but Mr. Williams will allow me to speak about it. Mr. Williams, as a developer, is required to petition to the Milfond Department of Transportation to have the roads taken over as the subdivision gets enough occupied houses. So my understanding, he does have enough occupied houses on that first entrance into the subdivision, and that's what he's applying for from the DFT, is for them to accept road maintenance. This is something we really encourage developers to do as soon as they reach that threshold of occupied houses. That way, the DFT can accept maintenance, and we don't have to worry about complaints in the future from homeowners, and their rights are a part.
Can I ask Linwood to come forward for a little time? So Linwood, the petition that you're asking here, has it been submitted to the state for their approval yet, or do we have to send it?
We should approve that.
We approve this tonight, is that right? And then you submit it to the DFT?
That's correct.
We have to adopt the resolution. We're concerned that.
That's what I've been asking. We have a resolution, y'all ready? Correct? All righty. So what we need to do is a motion to accept the request from the subdivision, Linwood Williams and Oak Ridge subdivision, requesting that Woodley and Fandry be entered into the state system, and we need a motion to do that.
I will move.
Everybody made a motion, we need a second. Tell everyone one second.
You're ready to go.
All right, you'll say "a". Linwood, that's the most folks I've heard for one time.
So if you're wrong, Fanny would.
I always thought you were a good man, too.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
And Jonathan, you'd be proud, because he turned in the old pedal camp department into a daycare center for his dog, something your dad very supported by. All right, Sparty, County Manager's Report.
Mr. Chairman, just one thing to add. We are working on the retreat agenda, so if any commissioners have any suggestions for topics, if you would just forward that to us. We've got kind of a working draft of agenda, it's very similar to what we did last year. And so if there are any specific topics, just let me know.
County Attorney's Report. Internal, external report, let's start with Bill. Internal, external reports tonight. Did any meetings? Have you been to some meetings?
Yes. I am the new person on the Community Relations Commission, and we met yesterday. You, you have two choices being with them these days, either by Zoom or by telephone. And I just happened to meet with them by telephone, and so that worked out all right, and they have, they have some of the same problems that all Russes were having with lack of funds to help people that are in great need. And I've got a handout for you. Can you pass that and take one, please? To snip the ribbon. And Mr. Hollowell died at a very young age, and he is the son of Debbie named Whit Hollowell. Maybe you knew Whit, probably from Buck Easton High School, I'm sure. Whitney, who is the son and daughter of Frank Hollowell and Elizabeth Hollowell. Of course, the trail is named after this fellow's grandmother, Elizabeth. But the college wanted to do something, and there'll be a formal ceremony, you will be invited to probably five or six months from now, when they finish the second phase of the, building of the second phase, the last phase of the trail, I'm sorry. And they'll also have a little ceremony commemorating for this fellow right here. So I thought you might want to know about that. That's already in the minutes of the Community Relations Commission. And I also want to mention that the, I'm also in charge, I'm in charge of the SPCA. I'm the only person left. And we are meeting tomorrow. You only have one choice tomorrow, Zoom. And by 6 o'clock tomorrow night, I hope that I know a little bit more than I do today about Zoom. And I hope that Mr. Perry and I are the only two county commissioners of North Carolina that don't know anything about Zoom. We don't even know what Zoom is or what we. But at any rate, are you ahead of me, Mr. Perry? Are you ahead of me? You ain't ahead of me. But by tomorrow, I will have a report for you at the next meeting on the SPCA, okay? And we meet once a month, local board of commissioners. I don't have any other report today to submit, so I thank you.
Thank you for serving all those committees.
Did I, did I finish fast enough?
Perfect.
Oh, good.
Thank you for serving all the committees. Thank you for serving on the committee. Sean?
Mr. Chairman, it's been a very busy time since our last meeting. Been on various boards and committee meetings. One of them is the Workforce Development Board, where I serve as the business representative for Passaport County. And the majority of that meeting, we sat around discussing a lot of the numbers from the last couple of quarters coming out of the pandemic, really trying to understand what's happening to the jobless rates and numbers for the region. We're still seeing a lot of people able to find jobs. We're still seeing a lot of employers have jobs to post, but there's just a lot of need out there, a lot of ground we've had to make up. We continue to monitor that. In addition to that, we've had Economic Development met. And in the last meeting, we were able to sit down with our new interim director, Scott Hitten, and really kind of get him going, as you know, moving forward, keeping the movement going, the momentum going on some projects that still can be very transformative for the area. Elizabeth City Downtown Inc. also met, and that continues to be a very positive board. Lots of great energy, positive people. They've got the downtown art projects, new businesses popping up, and they're starting to plan for the next potato festival. So just of both of those boards, both Economic Development, Elizabeth City Downtown, both remain strong and show a significant willingness to invest in the area. Lots, lots of good new money coming in to some of the buildings downtown. In some of those meetings, I was able to meet the new city manager, Monterey Freeman. And initially, very impressed. We initiated a good dialogue, and I look forward to working with him on various boards and projects, including the restructuring of the Parks and Rec, which will have its first meeting with its new director this next week. So I don't want to steal any thunder from Commissioner Jordan, but he and I both also serve on a Business Advisory Board for ECSU School of Business. And we were notified over the weekend that School of Business obtained their accreditation for the next five years, and that announcement will be officially made tomorrow. I know the dean was very excited about that. She's looking at hosting an event on Thursday, a virtual event on Thursday evening with the dean. So been a very busy week, that's my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jonathan. Welcome to the board, do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the board for the phone calls, the hours, the cars that y'all sent out there. My dad's passing.
We appreciate what he did for the board, what he did for the county, and how strong of a support he was for his community.
He had the way that the community did.
Was all engaged. Perry?
I've only had one meeting since we met last. It was Department Social Services. It was an extended meeting this morning, a lot of updates. What's going on, obviously, if you can imagine, all the services that they provide for our community have been just, they were hard to deliver before COVID. Those ladies and a couple of gentlemen that worked there worked tirelessly to make sure the services for our children and adults throughout the county are met, and they do a great job. I did want to give kudos out to, I think we mentioned last meeting, but our friends, Kristi and Gerald Saunders. Kristi was our EM coordinator for twenty-five years, sorry.
Yes.
And Gerald was a paramedic out there with Jerry Noel for twenty-plus years. And they both retired together end of December, and their party was supposed to be on January fifteenth to do COVID. Couldn't have it, but nobody knew it throughout our careers, but she's actually my first cousin. She used to push me down the steps, down the school路. But I'll still give her kudos, because she's pretty good. But great service to the county, and I'll be truly missed. That's all I have.
Mr. Perry, any meetings?
Um, I had one meeting in the Health Department, and that's the reason why I mentioned earlier that the Health Department is actually one of the leading health departments in North Carolina as far as the way they practice and administer the vaccine. The other thing that I'd like to say is that I'm so proud of the younger people that are actually joining the board of county commissioners. I've been here a long time. This is perhaps going on my nineteenth year. And I was glad to see Mr. Leeds jumped in. I heard him say more today than I ever heard him say. And when he was over there, I didn't recognize him. But when he blinked his eyes, I could tell that he was so much like his father. And his father lived great south here. And I'd like to mention Mr. Lynnwood Williams, too. I taught Mr. Lynnwood Williams in high school mathematics. A lot of people didn't know that. But I'm so proud of what he's doing out in the community, because what he's doing is really not seen in a lot of places. Passaport County can be a great county, and as I always said since I've been here, that we have to learn how to live and work together and accept one another's differences. So again, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan?
A few things. One, I had the privilege of attending the county association, virtually attending the county association meeting January fourteenth and fifteenth. Chairman Griffin and I were the delegates, and I was voting for the first day. Second, he took the second day. But I attended virtually both days, and I was very interested in dealing with the goals for the association for the state of North Carolina, his concern, and how it would be presented to the legislature in Raleigh. So that was very interesting. I also attended a jail board meeting. Things are going well there in spite of the pandemic. They're having some challenges over there, but things are going relatively well. I got my feet wet at the economic development meeting. I attended that meeting also. And we had a library board meeting. The last thing I would say, I think the Health Department is doing a great job as far as the vaccine is concerned. I thought that my wife and I would be in line all day, but we ended up on about one hour, in line, one hour, overtime. So I think it's working very well. I hope everyone hurry up and get the vaccine, so that I can pull this mask off.
Well, I had a few meetings to attend this month. I attended a Highway Seventeen meeting last week, and by twenty thirty-five, the twenty billion dollars of revenue which is generated from the gas tax will probably slip away very fast. With initiatives of going to green energy and electric cars, that amount of gasoline tax and road fuels tax that vaporize roads will be having, that burden will be shifted to a different type of funding formula, whether it be based on a miles used tax or some form of a tax in which it will become in a different format. The fuel tax generates about an estimated two billion dollars a year right now. At a meeting we heard last week, when the DOT is, they've started to recover from the past year in the loss of revenues. We still are behind because of a program where through the years that the DOT had gone into communities and promised landowners they would be purchasing their property. Had a certain deed to be determined, and which some of the lightways have been maintained, and the landowners could not develop their property. However, the state of North Carolina is on the hook, which has taken a considerable amount of the revenue that they had to pay these landowners off of those promised or estates. I talked to Bobby Hannig last week about broadband, and it's a big issue for our ten counties and being we're so rural, that putting fiber in the ground has caused prohibitive. Elon Musk and some of his satellites, on which you follow the news lately, he's been putting low atmosphere satellites in the air, which will benefit not only the rural part of North Carolina, but all the mountain areas that are having internet issues or cellphone issues. Those low-flying satellites will be connected into a backbone type of system, such as the antenna that you receive your cellphone, and which will be connected into the internet. That program and process has been worked on in the legislature. And Dr. Bobby Hannig, hopefully by the spring, will be having some more conversations about where we are with that initiative through the state. Some legislators still think they need to be hardwired and hardvired. However, if you live in the northern end of the county, or the southern end, or the western end, you don't have very good internet, you don't have any Wi-Fi or nothing. I think that's a big thing that the school system has been requesting with the hotspots and the buses, is the activity where the parents are still having to carry their laptops or their tablets to the, to these hotspot sites and download their assignments, take them back, re-download them back. Last week, as Charles said, is that the NC, North Carolina Commissioners Association had their virtual meeting. When you sit in the meeting, you listen to a hundred other counties participate, only four participants, four or five people that actually participate in the conversation. It's kind of frustrating when you think the other communities don't have any problems. If you ride around a little bit, everybody has a problem, but nobody wanted to talk about it, did they, Charles? You heard the same thing, the same four or five people, that's all it mean. So I don't know whether it was silent, or catch caught their tongue, or something. But Alamo Commission last week, this is our regional, ten county region, they're putting together a couple of programs there that are active. One is the bill about our meals and bills program. During the COVID, the increase in the amount of funding for the meals and bills program went up to sixty-five hundred additional meals per week that they're having to provide. We have five restaurants that provide those meals to the communities, and we continue on with the strength of our communities and provide those meals to those homebound people and those in the country with food slots. The transportation meeting last week, it yielded information that is hard to understand unless you sat there, but Highway IE-7 from Norfolk to Williamson is still on the back burner, where they're putting the efforts from Raleigh to Williamson. Now, figure that out. We're losing lightways and access to the developed, developed highways, not protecting them. So it's going to end up costing DOT more money for our interstate IE-7. However, it's still there in the discussion. Sean mentioned a little bit about workforce. Y'all got another program that y'all just implemented for Northeastern High School somewhere?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You want to speak about that?
Well, it's, um...
We got that today.
We've, we're starting, you know, basically, it's some internship-type placement programs, where, you know, you're posted on some address. I could bring some more details to the board for...
You'll have another meeting probably by the time, really, it's kind of, but I saw that today from that consortium meeting. And with the airport authority, we continue to see people back flying, armies flying through the community. There's a lot of activity at our airport, as well as the Coast Guard. So I think our aviation strength has continued to grow, that we continue to grow and work towards our next level of economic development. So that's all I have to say. Mike, any plus sessions? All right, at this time, we need a motion to adjourn. Jonathan, you want to introduce all your family members who came to you? I'm going to do that, sorry about that.
That's my mother-in-law, back there with my little girl.
There you go.
My father-in-law. My grandmother-in-law. My sister Rachel.
Yeah.
And my mom.
There you go.
My brother Benjamin. Aunt Regina. My cousin Tammy. My wife Anna. Crystal, Addison, and Amy.
All right, well, we want to thank you for bringing that...
Anybody else can do it.
Thank you, Jonathan, and I'll thank you and your children, and you're coming up. We're going to cleanse, and hopefully come back at Christmas time and sing us a Christmas carol. All righty. For this time, we have a motion to adjourn. It'll be a second. Motion, Cecil, it'll be a second. Take control, and we're discussing all of the favors, and I'll say aye. Because of those white sides, it's going to adjourn, so I make sure. Thank you, Jonathan.